Twenty-three. Can we ask the secretary to hold the law?
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Yakovich? Mr. Banks?
Here.
Mr. DeFalcough?
Here.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Osier?
Here.
Ms. Savage?
Here.
Mr. Stafford?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Open public. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Laws nineteen seventy-five. Certification of this notice is on file in the offices of township clerk. Man's written notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, was mailed to Brooklyn County Times, was filed with the clerk of Mount Holly Township, and was mailed to all for a sentence, who requested and paid for such notice.
I'm going to stand this week. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're the new members of this meeting, so I want to square our names. Hi, station name?
I, Kristen Savage.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States and in this state?
In the United States and in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully, impartially?
And that I will faithfully, impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All the duties of the office of?
All of the duties of the office of?
Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board?
Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board?
Class four member?
Class four member?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So if you'll sign that, I'll submit your signature.
Well, the board would like to welcome Ms. Savage. Item two on our agenda refers to matters referred to us by the township council. We're reading Township Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash one. The ordinance of the township council is the township of Mount Holly amending Chapter one forty-three, Housing, Low and Moderate Income, and revising Ordinance twenty-two-two-six, Amending Chapter one forty-nine for land use.
Could the board's reference, um, this is a matter that was referred to this board by the governing body in order to comply with the township's affordable housing obligation under, um, the court orders and judgment of repose entered by the court previously. We do have, um, so the, the board's job under this referral is to review the ordinance and determine whether complying with having this ordinance is consistent with the township's master plan. And Mr. Fox will speak to this, but part of the township's master plan is to provide for a variety of uses and also to provide for affordable housing. Um, and also for your reference, Mr. Fox, I don't want to step on his toes, but he may also talk about the fact that because of a change in one of the uses of the hospital, which was originally going to leave, uh, the township, but, um, they, they wound up staying. Originally, the township's, uh, affordable housing plan included that area because we thought it was going to be vacated as part of an area to utilize for affordable housing. When they decided, I guess a year, eighteen months ago, to come back, then the township had to reformulate. So that's why we're amending some ordinances and amending, uh, the housing element fair share plan. If, I think it would be helpful, Ed, if you're able to, and Mr. Fox was, was sworn in at one of the prior meetings, um, are you able to comment on this ordinance before providing testimony on the, uh, actual, the housing element?
Sure. Again, uh, my name's Edward Fox. I'm a licensed professional planner at the firm of Environmental Resolutions. Uh, I'm a member in good standing. Uh, my associate is Tim Kulikolani, who usually comes to your board. As council had indicated, um, this ordinance is required as part of a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, uh, because, um, Virtual Hospital decided it loved Mount Holly more than it loved West Hampton Township, I guess. And as part of the settlement agreement and working with the court master, it was worked out by the township committee, the court master, and the different parties that were involved in the, uh, not quite objectors, but involved in the, uh, litigation, that the township should have four opportunity sites identified, uh, by, uh, the board and, uh, given to the council that would could be zoned, uh, to provide sufficient affordable housing at, uh, twenty percent rates, uh, at, um, I think it's twenty percent rate, if I forgive me if it's not, at, at, at twenty units per acre. On the map behind you, uh, below the television screen is the four different sites that were identified. There's one at the Hanesport Township border, Site A. Site B is the Mill Race Village. Site C is a site that's on Route one third, uh, Route thirty-eight and South Street, and Site D is off at Monmouth Road. These ordinance is an overlay zone for an opportunity. It doesn't replace the existing zone. And although the provisions are made in a certain way, there's no guarantee that any of these things are going to happen. And some of the sites, as indicated in the plan, provide testimony, have a little bit difficulty because, for example, uh, they may have some contamination of other sort of things. Uh, I believe that the ordinance, uh, is consistent with the master plan, uh, to provide the township's fair share of regional obligation of low and moderate and very low income housing required by the state, uh, Supreme Court. There were two things that I recommended, uh, that should be put in the ordinance. I think they're in the amendment. One is to correct some language regarding the percentages of affordable housing that was indicated by the court master, and you'll find that in the ordinance. And the second one, which I think was mentioned by Mr. DeFalcough at our last meeting on February twenty-seventh, was that in the Mill Race Village, uh, that site is identified as a mixed-use zone. It's currently, the Mill Race Village is a mixed-use zone right now, so you can have housing and commercial activities and cultural activities, et cetera. The original drafting of the ordinance that I put together, uh, indicated that there should be no public performances and any cultural activities. It was pointed out to me, as I blushed, that that meant that if there was a book reading for five children, that that would be prohibited by the ordinance, among other things. Uh, and that's true. The reason why I put that in there is because there's more parking in this part of the town, and that's where we should have public events. However, culture exists in all parts of the town, and it's just a short walk from here over to the mills on Washington Streets and Church Streets, so that's fine. That was also requested by the attorney that represents, uh, third Church Streets, the major property, and they're happy with that. So with those two changes, I would recommend that the ordinance is, uh, is consistent with the township's master plan.
In addition to those two changes, uh, based upon, and I don't know if you were able to see it, I had an, uh, uh, conversation with a special master late this afternoon around four o'clock, and she suggested, um, and it's on page three at bullet point three, just a couple of clarifications on, um, one eighty-seven point two C to insert the word affordable on that. So it reads, provided that such affordable housing complies with the law. And then on points one and three, again, to clarify that, so that at least fifty percent of the affordable units shall be affordable, very low income, and then point three, that whole clause was a little bit jumbled, so she suggested removing the word require after the phrase at least and referenced in the agreement. So that third phrase would read, at least thirteen percent of the affordable units shall be very low income units at thirty percent or less of, um, median income, and then it ends there with, with the revision that you had included.
Thanks, Ms. Parker. Right, I did take a look at that. The previous language, uh, could be, it was sort of ambiguous. It could be written a couple of different ways. This makes it a lot cleaner, simpler to understand, uh, particularly by Mr. Frank, the attorney representing the other one. So I appreciate those clarifications by the court master, who is almost always right.
So those revisions will be included in the recommendation that we would report back to the governing body if you still adopt it, along with the finding that the ordinance is consistent with the master plan. Um, it seems to be consistent with the language suggested by the, the, uh, the special master, uh, council, who's had input, the council for affordable housing, uh, as well as, uh, the township's, uh, affordable housing attorney. So everybody's had, and Mr. Fox, and everybody's had a bite at this, um, so I think we have it right. Um, so the resolution that I've drafted and prepared for your reference tonight includes all those changes of finding that this ordinance is, um, consistent with the master plan for the reasons that, that Mr. Fox just sort of indicated. So I don't know if board members have any questions or any thoughts on his testimony and all those revisions. So we're reporting back that you tweaked these, um, provisions in the code, that we provided them and it provided them to Council for attention.
I'm making a motion to, uh, take ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one and, uh, and the landmark section say that it is, um, consistent with the master plan, um, and takes our recommendation. Move over.
With the changes as outlined in Section two?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, from my information, which one are we approving here? Will we, have we jumped down through the resolution? Are you approving the township?
Yes, because it's, the ordinance is what you've been reviewing, and then the resolution is, uh, the action on the ordinance, and the resolution actually suggests the changes. So yes, we are sort of jumping down in the order on the agenda.
So you're making a move?
We need a sec.
Yeah. Second, Resolution number two zero three, two zero, two, three, dash, zero, eight.
It's a term if I could?
I was going to say, we have a public hearing, uh, comment section prior to resolution on the agenda.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah, I just noticed that. I just, I got a copy of the presentation. So before the vote, we should open it.
I can, uh, just?
You know, I was looking over your shoulder.
The reason why this ordinance is for adopting the, uh, the housing element fair share plan is that the fair share plan says this is your ordinance. So you have to recommend that before you approve the ordinance.
Correct, yeah. I, I understood that. I just was a little confused about the timing of those. So our next step would be to open this up for public comment.
They have a question or comments?
Public hearing for questions and comments. We'll start at the front row, work back. Everyone can have three minutes.
My name is Louis Lopez, I'm living in Mount Holly on ninety-eleventh Drive. Wonder if you could clarify that all four addresses to that point, could you clarify again for me?
The addresses?
Yeah, to all four sites. You can slide a little bit out so that a customer can, can see.
Well, there, it's, uh, how about I reference the plant? There are dozens of properties here.
No, they said four, right?
There are four sites.
Yeah, can you tell me the address?
Lewis, there, there are multiple addresses. Those sites comprise of multiple properties.
Oh, okay.
So what I recommend, if you'd like, we can provide you a copy of that site map, and you can use it as reference. I could even give you a copy. There's one over here. Do we have a copy? If we can get you a copy.
My second?
Tell you what page it's on in the document while you're asking me the question.
Okay. My second question is, the new master plan is, is going to be a fair, uh, behind all man's store, does that mean you can have a book fair or a book reading behind the store? You said that would be prohibited?
Lewis, we made a, a motion here, uh, last meeting to amend, help the council consider amending the ordinance, which changes that to allow that.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious.
For Ed said earlier, we are now allowing that for the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Okay, I'll just cite the properties. It, it's not too difficult. So Site A is block sixty-six point zero-two, lots one, one point oh-one, two, six, and six point zero-five altogether. It's roughly four point nine-three acres. Site B is block eighty-four, lots thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-nine, fifty-two, and sixty-five. Uh, it's worth noting that, uh, in twenty-oh-two, there were several lots put together, emerged to become Lot fifty-two. Site C is block one-twelve, lots fourteen through twenty-one, fifteen point oh-one, sixteen point oh-one, twenty-two point oh-one, and twenty-two. That's roughly six point four-six acres. Site B is roughly four point six-two acres. And Lot, Site D is block one-two-five, lots nine and nine point zero-one, and that's four point three-seven acres.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone from the second row?
My name's Audrey Bensener. I'm here representing, um, thirty Church Street. So I very much appreciate, um, Judge Covert and the special master having me included in a lot of the email traffic that went, uh, back and forth on this, um, amendment. So I was, uh, up to speed a little bit, but, and I apologize if I just, um, have not been able to keep up with it all, but Mr. Borowski sent out a Dropbox link to the amendment, um, to the master plan, which seemed to be the last, um, of the amendment. But then there was a lot of email traffic back and forth on, uh, some very logical changes. But is that what the board is considering tonight, is the ordinance, um, that you're referencing, or the, the, uh, ordinance is referencing an amendment to the master plan? How do we get that final document? How's the board, is the board referen, is the board considering a final document, a final amendment? Um, I guess I'm just confused. I apologize.
There's two parts to it.
Yep.
The first part is the ordinance that the governing body introduced, referred here.
Yep, that's easy.
We just discussed, and I outlined all the changes, and then Mr. Fox provided testimony on it. So that's just the ordinance which provides the overlay.
That I got.
So that is going, is one part of the process. That is going to be part of the housing element fair share plan, which Mr. Fox is going to provide testimony about that document.
So, understood, and I understand the ordinance part, but the document, the?
Housing element.
Housing element, um, correct. So we've seen one version, but it seems like that's had a lot of iterations recently, like within the past few days, that maybe some changes, um, that I've seen some changes to the language, which all made sense, but I didn't know if that has found its final form, and if everybody has seen it in its final form. I don't know that I've seen it in its final form. I've seen all the pieces that maybe went along with it, but, um, the, you have an ordinance that refers to an amendment that, is it in its final form now? Has everybody here seen it in its final form? I haven't seen its final form, but that's okay. I'm not part of the board, but I'm assuming that everybody's seen at least all the pieces that went along that changed it.
Yes, I can answer that, Ms. Green.
That'd be great.
So, um, and forgive me, I, I haven't returned your telephone call for.
You sure haven't, but that's okay. I'll let it slide.
I wish our telephone system was better in my office. On February twenty-seventh, uh, I presented the board a copy of this big, thick document.
Yes.
And it had a lot of yellow highlights in it. Those yellow highlights were the changes that had from the previous document that was accepted. It had to be changed after July fifth, twenty-twenty-two. So my predecessor had prepared a, a document. We went to Judge Covert. Uh, the court master said after that meeting, these are the seven or eight more things you have to do.
Yep.
And so I put those in yellow, and everything that was in yellow was the changes that we looked at and we talked about the last time, and they're all okay in there. There was one more part that was yellow that said, in the rid, the document that I wrote after July fifth, that said, the township had adopted ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one, the one that we're talking about right now, uh, which was, which I was under the assumption that it happened. It didn't happen.
Okay.
So that's the other change that I made.
Okay.
The document now refers to an appendix, which had the ordinance in it.
Yep.
And thank you for bringing this up, uh, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest that the appendix that refers to the ordinance be updated, uh, to be what we're talking about right now, because the ordinance that's in the appendix, which I think is appendix Q, as in whatever word begins with Q, um, has a lot of those things in there, and it would be best to say it's consistent with the master plan with the new version of the ordinance that we're discussing right now. I think that would make everything copacetic.
Okay.
In terms of process.
Understood. So as a, for instance, um, very recently, like in the past twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, um, excluding public performance done use, we've got to take.
Uh, your time is up. I'm very sorry to say that. We had two minutes allocated to this person.
Okay, I apologize. Tried very valiantly to offline reach Mr. Fox repeatedly, 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 did I not?
Yes.
So that we could do this offline?
This is not a Q and A.
And I could not reach him, and so I apologize. I, I thought Mr. Fox would stand up and say that.
Public events are allowed in the, in the new zoning ordinance.
Yeah, well, there's other things I would like to say, but so be it.
Um, Arlene Pfeiffer, uh, four ninety-four Mary Street, Mount Holly. I was at the last, I was at the meeting when I just first heard of these homes going in, and we're talking three to four stories for these homes. Are these condos?
That could be the maximum.
Okay, are these condos or are they homes?
So, so this is not, this is not a development application? This is a template for the zoning ordinance?
Okay.
So, and we're not able to comment?
Oh, man.
There's no specific development proposed for any site.
Okay.
What it is, is providing a zoning overlay. Nothing has been proposed, so this is just providing what's deemed to be available for the various zones, and we're not commenting on any, there's nothing before this.
But we're ready, we're ready for, if this building comes in, our schools are ready for this, our traffic, everything's ready for this. I just, I think, again, as being a resident, that, you know, we only have so much room.
Yeah, I would say honestly?
No, I'll, I'll sit down.
No, you can sit down. What I'm, what I'm going to say is, when, when the application comes before us, if one of these things come to be, then the board has to discuss exactly every one of those items you're talking about to make sure that, one, they're consistent, not too tall, there's no impact to the schools, the council should get involved, school board should get involved to make sure we have all those things on there, and they go through that. But like Lou said, there is no application in front of us that can discuss it.
If I can comment, when I made the, my opinion that the ordinance was consistent with the master plan, I did review the township's master plan and the different elements. In my professional opinion, I believe that if developed according to the ordinance at full capacity, it would not be detrimental and be consistent with the master plan. On the other question regarding condos or houses, condominiums is a form of ownership, right?
Will they be owning it or will they be renting it?
The municipal land use law does not allow municipalities to zone by forms of ownership.
Well, we don't have people that really care about our town.
That's the law.
Rule number three.
Um, name's Tom Brentfield, two-two-five Shree Street. Um, I just want to thank the board for considering that, um, change in allowing performance in the village. Uh, I run a theater down there, and hopefully someday we'll be able to return it. Um, so I want to thank you for, for dropping that. Uh, I do have one last question. When is the final draft? Because I've just, I just kind of read it today, and I noticed things like at Eagle Foundry, you can have places that have food and drink. Should that be an and/or? Because I know some places just have drink and other places, like bakeries, just have food, or is that something I should be concerned about? Again, it's just?
If somebody walks into a bar and says, I want something to eat, right? Then you get something to eat. If someone says, I want a drink, if the establishment allows drinks, you get drinks. You can have both.
Okay, so it's, it's an and/or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in row three? We're in? We are in the comment section for the public. Is there any, we finished everyone else, we were wondering if there was anything you would like to comment. We're talking about, uh, Township Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash one.
Well, I'm just a, a business owner in, uh, the Mill Race Village and, uh?
Just state your name if you're going to issue a comment. State your name and address if you're going to address the board.
Pardon me?
State your name and address if you're going to address the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I don't hear very long here.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Mark Donjay, and, uh, I'm with the Village Culture, which is a business in the Mill Race Village, and, uh, have hoped for, you know, possible development of that particular, uh, property that you're looking at, and, um, have considered, you know, potentially moving there eventually, uh, if the facility would, you know, enhance our business. So, um, that's, that's my interest in it. Uh, you know, I, I think, I understand there's lots of other interests, but, um, that was a, something of interest when we originally started that business.
And thank you, and thank you all for your comments. Next, item three on our agenda is?
So you have to vote on that?
So you want to close the public session? Motion to close?
We want to close the public session.
Okay. And then we have a motion pending on the report back to the governing body on the, uh, ordinance, that's the resolution that we're?
Yeah, and it's still in section.
Second.
Ms. Osier? Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalcough?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Osier?
Yes.
Ms. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number four, the matters to be considered by the public.
No, no, no. We, we still have to do the hearing on the actual housing element and fair share plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we have an ordinance, and then we have the actual housing. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, yes. That's how I wish to answer.
It's not usual to see that.
So once again, we're going to open up the floor.
No, no, we need Mr. Fox to discuss. Yeah, so this is the actual plan that Mr. Fox prepared, so, and again, he's, he's here to provide information as to what it entails generally. Um, I think we went hand and hand with the ordinance discussion, but the boards, um, can comment on it, suggest any changes, but also make a finding that it's consistent with the master plan. And, and the, and the purpose, they're intertwined. That's why we're having them both tonight, is that the purposes are intertwined. I mean, to step on your toes there, I'd?
That's okay. I got steel tipped boots. Uh, actually, my toes have been broken several times, basically, to get loads of papers, too much information. As my previous testimony said, the, and as speaking with the Swinzinger, um, you all had seen this version, uh, with some highlights on February twenty-seventh, and, uh, those were all in response to the court masters, uh, July fifth, twenty? and, uh, those were all in response to the court master's, uh, July fifth, twenty-twenty-two report, saying these are several conditions that you need to meet in order to be, uh, consistent with the settlement agreement. So all those changes were made to be consistent. The last thing that was, uh, inconsistent was, as I mentioned, that, uh, I had said that this ordinance were adopted at a certain time. That has been changed. The, the, the plan says it's scheduled to be here and get approved at these such and such dates. Um, I previously said that, uh, if you weren't, I recommend the master plan, it's the, uh, the housing element fair share master plan, which has been found consistent by you all previously to be consistent with the master plan. With these amendments, which are consistent with the court master's report, are also consistent with the master plan, in my professional opinion. I would however, suggest that the amended for, I believe it is, appendix Q, that has the ordinance that you just talked about, the final ver, that the document include the final version of the ordinance, twenty-twenty-three dash one, after it's been adopted by the township. And I think that would be satisfactory to Judge Covert. So again, in summary, I believe it's consistent with the township's master plan.
Thank you. Questions from the public?
I mean, not to just, uh, step on its toes, but the whole reason for this is to update the plan to make it compliant with the, the township's obligation. And just for members of the public, the township is involved in litigation as every other municipality in the state of New Jersey is, because there's been, uh, thirty years of litigation involving affordable housing, and each town's obligation to provide affordable housing. And Manholy has been, um, very compliant in its, uh, in its efforts to provide affordable housing. They had complied with each round, got a judgment proposed, meaning we're in compliance. But with this change, because of the retention of the hospital property, it, the housing element had to be updated, and that's something that the township has to be, has worked on with Mr. Fox, and this is just an, an amendment to the last, uh, plan because of that minor change circumstance. So, um, it's necessary to find it in, in, consistent with the master plan, and then one of the master plan's purposes is, as Mr. Fox and I have said, is to provide various types of housing, recreation, and also affordable housing. And to, it would seem to be axiomatic to comply, to say it's consistent with the master plan by complying with a coordinated settlement on an affordable housing obligation, aside from just being something one wants to do. So, um, are there any questions? That, that seems pretty clear, and what brought out, Mr., I thought it was a very well-prepared prepare housing plan, uh, housing element.
So seal my, the seal in front of the document, much of it was, uh, prepared by my predecessor, Barbara Fegley, who served with you. So I'm, I'm not gonna take all the credit for it. I'll just take the final credit.
Well, once again, we're gonna try to do this. Uh, are there any comments from the public ordinance? We started the first row, and we're back. Yes.
I think, I wonder if there will be any change in our master plan on Royal Castle Street from Grant Street, the wooden area, or any, um, any special master plan abandoned?
That's, that's not what we're receiving comments on, and I have no idea, actually.
It's not part of the housing and fair share plan.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Second row? Third row? Anyone else have a comment? Okay, we can, we're closing the comment period.
So, uh, I would suggest, is there a motion to, uh, make a finding that the, uh, housing element and fair share plan as presented by Mr. Fox is consistent with the master plan, with the suggestion to add as appendix Q the final version of ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one upon its adoption? Second, who made the first?
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalco?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Miss Ossia?
Yes.
And Miss Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Motion.
And, and I, I take it in that motion, the board authorizes the board secretary in consultation with a solicitor to convey that information to the municipal clerk and to the governing body, so that they can act upon that. Is that fair, David?
Yeah, that's fair.
We have, uh, we're now at item four, matters to be presented by the public. Do we have any matters?
That were provided, we just didn't have.
Well, no, now we have, we have the whole meeting.
Any matters for the public? Did you have something?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the same question I had before. Any, any special master plan across this street from Grant Street?
Louis, is there an application before the board regarding that property?
Uh?
There is no application.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the public? That being noted, we're gonna close the public section of this meeting. Uh, matters to be presented by the planner.
Mr. Chairman, myself and Mr. O'Kolani have no comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
You're welcome.
Matters to be presented by the solicitor.
Nothing further, thank you.
Matters to be presented by the board.
Only thing I have is to remind everybody, we will still be having our regularly scheduled meeting, Monday, April seventeen, here at seven P.M. That's our regularly scheduled meeting. This doesn't replace it, this is just an addition to it.
Thank you.
Ms. Torpic, might I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um, I know that in my profession, I have to fill out these state financial disclosure statements, and I imagine that's all you all have to do that as well, too.
I have not heard anything from the clerk, but I will ask her.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there was a revision to, um, some aspects of the statute, so, so that process has been delayed by some of the clerks, so that you may not be getting your information right away.
Okay, cause it's usually.
It's usually by the, by.
Basically, I did not know that.
So if I could just remind the board, so as public officials, uh, you all have, are kept by the state ethics to make sure that you disclose your financial holdings and real estate holdings, that sort of. And fill it out every year, give it to the state.
Thank you for having me here.
You're welcome.
Would anyone like to make a motion for a adjournment?
Motion, Roger. Second.
This meeting is adjourned?